I'll take a picture and send it to my dad, but I know it's across the street. So I'll get one of those. I'm doing a dream project. That's a good idea. Awesome. We do internal libraries. The service.
Okay. I'm trusting you. I'm trusting you as our chief.
So. Yeah. That's what just got. Yeah. I don't know. Good. Yeah. Also. I mean, I did everything. I went a lot with my people. So I went a lot there. The better ones here. I, uh, yeah, I'm hilarious, but. I'm mostly a plant. But it's not like. I already go worse. I said, you kind of see how this. Voluntarily, which is sad, but. No, I know someone. Tomorrow. I ended up my floor. I drew some holes. I want to see. I hope so. I think she was. My orange. She was. I pitched something and I did this. Today, I. It's all. I know it's more rich. It's all. We just. She wants me to call. She's my girlfriend. I got the email and I'm like. Surgery. Thursday. I said, I don't stay. I do that this week. So I guess. Get out and use some boxes. I gotta get some. Yeah. 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 Tomorrow. I ended up my floor. I drew some holes. I want to see. I hope so. I think she was. My orange. She was. 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 Something. And I did this. Today, I. It's all. I know it's more rich. It's all. We just. We just. We just. We just. She wants me to call. She's my girlfriend. I got the email and I'm like. Surgeon. It was Thursday. I should be. I said, I don't stay. I do that this week. So I just. I guess. Get out and use some boxes. I gotta get some. Yeah. 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 Took care of the tree. The rest of the tree is still kind of alive. Don't look at my. I don't know what the process is. Well, I mean, it's. I know. It's a vain. Starting this one. It's a more similar. This is an alternative to. To school. You know, I don't. To mobile work to me because nobody else is seeing. When I saw there and people. Yeah. Yeah. Good. Good. Where are you sitting? Are you guys able to fly down or have the. Yeah. I'm gonna say is, uh, she's a physician. So we kind of the same thing. Reverse. I was down there. Survive that area. Be a. I know. I'm surprised. It'd take two weeks. I did. I said, two weeks. I'm already in the car. I know. I've been hiding. That's usual. She's one and a half today. They're texting me on the. I'm like, no, already in the car. Already. It's crazy. See there? We got a. Cold. Right now. Okay. Just. That's okay. Wow. It's a lot of them. It does nothing. After that, so I doubt he has. So. I'm. I'm sorry. She's got. You know, sixty. She's got. You know, sixty. She's got. You know, sixty. She's. She's a physician. So we kind of the same thing. Reverse. I was down there. Survive that area. Be a. I know. I'm surprised. It'd take two weeks. I did. I said, two weeks. I'm like, oh my god. I'm already in the car. I know. I've been hiding. That's usual. She's. One and a half today. Texting me on the. I'm like, no, already in the car. Already. It's crazy. See there? We got. We got a. Cold. Right now. Okay. That's okay. Wow. It does nothing. After that, so I doubt he has. So. I'm. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. What's her point? So. She's got. You know, sixty. And she's. Also, it's. Somebody coming yesterday. For us. So we just. Yeah. 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 He probably. He's. Six years. Yeah. How's it going? Flying in like hot tonight. Ooh. Why can't I even squeeze my? There we go. Having a rough day, people. So you're good. You marked these already? Yeah. Okay. Plenty of them. I can dance. Come on, like zoom. Yes. Oh, time to get going. Do we have Counselor Bagley on Zoom? Counselor Bagley, can you hear us?
I can hear you loud and clear. How about me?
Um, you're a little quiet. Can we turn him up? Thank you. We're gonna get their microphones on. Yes. Okay. All right. I'd like to call a Monday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five council meeting to order. Roll call. Counselor Lovewell is absent and all other counselors are present. Counselor Bagley is joining us via Zoom this evening. Okay. So would you like to do the invocation?
Absolutely. Everybody, please join me in the attitude prayer. We pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy and happy. We pray for wisdom for all those who guide and govern. Help this government body in every situation to now and to do the things that are right and just with soundness of judgment and making vital decisions. We pray for the peacemakers, that the Holy Life-Giving Spirit may ever dwell in their hearts and the barriers of fear, suspicion and hatred may fall. This we pray to the Holy Father. Amen.
Amen. If everybody would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. And next would be our declaration of any conflict of interest. Is there a counselor who wishes to declare anything this evening? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to item six on the agenda, which is our public forum. So just a reminder, if you would like to speak for public forum, then you may come up, state your name and address, and you will have five minutes to speak. So is there anybody who wishes to speak?
My name is Michelle Smith and I live in Caribou, Maine. And I'm just here to address some things from the last meeting. About three hours and thirty minutes into the May twenty-seventh Caribou City Council meeting, the subject of EMS fees began. Due to the length of the meeting and no official bio break, multiple counselors got up and left while the fire chief was speaking. Several counselors got into side conversations throughout the same time at the podium. This should be avoided since it comes across as either a lack of respect or a lack of relevance to the person speaking and borders on sketchy to those who are watching. This is against Robert's rules. The sarcastic remarks about the wages of the fire department came across as very disrespectful, not only to the first responders themselves, but also to the community that supports them. While the chief was letting the council know that they are understaffed by three people and about how many hours per week the remaining crews are working, the smirks and comments about essentially forcing the first responders to volunteer for yet more time away from their families came across as nothing, as if nothing that was stated about the current situation mattered. This all took place during a council meeting that included a charge that the budget be cut while preserving essential services, which caused a rather lengthy conversation on employee morale. Was this morale in reference to all employees or dependent upon which department you work for? In my opinion, something significant has changed when a council shows more respect and fight for those that sell drugs than for those who are on the front lines of dealing with the ramifications of a drug epidemic, who medically intervene in overdoses for those where it may or may not be successful, who also provide lifesaving measures to folks in various environments and transport them to medical centers, both in Caribou and beyond, as well as put out fires under a variety of circumstances in Caribou and the surrounding communities, see things that you and I would not be able to sleep if we saw, sleep away from home for three or more nights a week and miss out on a lot of their own family celebrations. They are here for this community regardless of the day, regardless of the time, to do what they can to preserve lives and property. I'm ashamed of the way things came across during the May twenty-seventh meeting, and I wanted to state publicly that the tone of the council in no way represents the majority of the public and that the same level of respect should be given to the fire department as is given to all other departments in Caribou. Secondly, to clear up what essential services are, which have nothing to do with the people that do them, if there were a three-week or more power outage, possibly even due to one of those albatross solar fields tied into the grid catching fire, what services would still be necessary to protect and assist the citizens of Caribou? And do those service personnel have what they need to do so? The answer to this question is the answer to what services are essential, and I can assure you that the bookmobile will not be on the front lines. Consider the latest school budget as a vote, vote as a call from the citizens to be more fiscally responsible. Between the continuous raising of city and state taxes to the market value assessments, which are essentially unrealized capital gains and in most circumstances are illegal, citizens cannot afford to continue dishing out more monies. If this trajectory continues, the council's desire to have that land grab, I mean land bank, will definitely come to pass, but the question remains on how that will be sustained when no one is able to pay taxes. Hard times call for hard decisions, and sometimes city officials need to do what city officials need to do in order to limit the burden placed on the people.
Yes. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Please come on up.
Madam Mayor, counselors. Manager Thompson. I'm Dave Corvo, and you appointed me to the Economic Development Committee. In light of what transpired in this community regarding a budget, I urge you to fund no more than last year's dollar amount. I believe no jobs will be lost and Caribou will survive flat-funded department budgets. Following this course of action accomplishes two very critical components. The first allows existing commercial businesses some breathing room to weather out the out-of-control inflation and rising cost of doing business. And secondly, it shows any prospective business looking at Caribou that we are fiscally responsible and live within our means. And we need to care deeply about taxing our property owners and all suffer a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? Okay. Seen. Oh, the one time that I don't ask if anything. Yes, please, if you'd like to read it.
Sure. This one right here?
So it's this one? Okay.
Uh, let's see. Twenty-fifth Nicholas Master. President, it has been brought to our attention by our patients and community that there has been miscommunication, use of incorrect terminology, rumors and overall confusion regarding our city's current ordinance within which Safe Alternative complies on an annual basis. Unfortunately, none of our officers will be in Northern Maine during this meeting, so we offer this letter in hopes of clarifying what Safe Alternatives works hard to maintain regarding both our state and city licensing, since business has been mentioned during recent public discussions relating to the operating status of Richardson Remedies. On a state of Maine level, medical marijuana caregivers and dispensaries are not the same with respect to licensing. Both entities are in the Maine Medical Use Marijuana Program rules, but have different sections under the state's rules and regulations. Some differences between these entities are as follows. There's an annual registration fee for a dispensary, which may not be less than five thousand dollars or more than twelve thousand dollars. There's an annual registration fee for caregivers based upon plant canopy. The fee may not be less than fifty dollars or more than fifteen hundred dollars. Dispensaries must be audited annually by office cannabis policy for renewal. Caregivers do not always have annual state audits for renewals. OCP also outlines that dispensaries must have regulations for policies, procedures and records, including but not limited to personnel files, business records, daily in for accounted by two employees, all THC products being under double lock and key, harsh security matters, measures, background checks for officers and tax compliant, which is all audited annually by OCP at renewal. Caregivers do not experience these checks. Currently, the city of Caribou allows registered cultivation caregivers, which are caregivers that can only grow cannabis at their location and. And nonprofit dispensaries. Safe Alternatives is the only nonprofit state licensed dispensary located in Caribou. City application comes with an annual fee of five hundred dollars, an annual inspection by the city code enforcement, fire chief and police chief to ensure that the nonprofit dispensary, a registered cultivation caregiver is complying with city ordinance language. Last week, one of our officers requested a copy of Richardson Remedies' annual city application from city officials for what has and is currently allowed at this time. The officer was informed that there is no application on file for any previous years for Richardson's remedies. Safe Alternatives does not benefit from having a dispensary license any longer, as we no longer have a growing operation or a C-one, D-one lab outside of Caribou, but must still, must still maintain the heavy burden of expensive licensing process simply to remain compliant with our city's ordinance. By not also carrying this burden, Richardson Remedies is, in its current retail operation, has not only benefited competitively, but has been and continues to operate with disregard to the Caribou's, to the city's ordinance entirely. Safe Alternatives welcomes the presence of medical cannabis business in Caribou, but we all, but we all must participate equally and lawfully on both city and state levels. Currently, this is not the case. We encourage, encourage the board to fully understand the difference between the compliant operation of Safe Alternatives and the noncompliant operation of Richardson's Remedies and how Safe Alternatives does not benefit despite the rhetoric from that, from that business and its supporters. From all exceptions to be made from them to continue to operate as they are currently structured, is our position that any other medical marijuana businesses who want to operate with, within Caribou City limits may do so, as long as they are following the language in the ordinance put forth by the Caribou City Council and that submitted by Safe Alternatives.
Okay, thank you. There'll be more on that discussion later on in the meeting tonight. Okay. Item number seven is the acceptance of minutes. We don't have any minutes to accept this meeting, so we'll move on to item eight, which is bid openings, awards and appointments. And item eight A is recognition of employee milestone anniversaries. So we get to celebrate a little bit tonight. So I'm gonna let Counselor Smith kind of read a little bit about that.
The city here was fortunate to have many employees who have devoted much of their career to the citizens of Caribou. The Caribou City Council traditionally recognized lengths of service in five-year increments on an annual basis. Tonight, the city council would like to thank all the following individuals for their hard work and contributions of, contributions over the years. Let's start with Peter Baldwin.
Hi. Congratulations, Peter.
Thank you.
Oh. Take your time. Thank you. Now, is that five years? Five years with the city?
Five years.
Yes. Perfect.
Next, I'll. And next, we'll go down to manager Thompson, Penny Thompson. Gone up for fifteen years. Service to the city.
Who's gonna take this picture for Penny? Oh, Gary's on it. Congratulations, Penny.
Thank you so much. Oh, let me button my buttons.
Okay, you button your buttons.
Is that what you want on there?
On the billboard downtown.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you. Congratulations, Penny.
Uh, next, we have Matt Bushard, Caribou Rex Department. Twenty years.
Congratulations, Matt.
Yeah, we got a big one here, too. We got Gary Markey from the Rex Department. Thirty years.
Rex Department. It's got the longevity.
Thirty to go.
Yeah, thirty more to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
I don't think anyone else is here.
No, I think that's everyone that's here, but if you'd like to.
Did you want to get a picture of everybody with the certificate?
We can do that, yeah. It's a good idea. Maybe if the council can just squeeze in, then we can read the rest after.
We're not picking up John. We talked about those last couple pictures. It's not in there.
All rise.
Here, here.
The Honorable Jones.
Okay, we need to be balanced. Are we balanced? All right, there we go. It's all about balance. And Smush.
She was in the tree there. He's tall kids.
Wait, are you talking about you?
No.
Thank you. Thank you all. And Deputy Mayor Smith does have some other names to read, people who couldn't be here this evening. He gets his microphone back together.
Uh, we also have, let's see, Kyle Scott from the Caribou Police Department, five years of service. Thank you. Saint Germain, Caribou Public Library, five years. Holly Duty, Caribou Finance Department, ten years. Adam Charrier, Caribou Fire and Ambulance Department, it's got ten years. Chad Cochran, Police Department, fifteen years. Scott Dow, Caribou Fire and Ambulance Department, fifteen years. John Thornton, Caribou Fire and Ambulance Department, fifteen years. And we also have Chief Brian LaJoy, Caribou Fire and Ambulance Department for thirty years.
Right.
Part dedication.
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody for their years of service. It's really wonderful. Okay, item number eight B is the fire station engineering firm bids. So I'll talk a little bit about that. The city of Caribou has received funding through the Arustic County ARPA grant funding through a congressionally directed spending request from Senator Collins' office and from funding that was set aside by designated capital funds for a project to make needed renovations and upgrades to the Caribou Fire and Ambulance Department building. The city council municipal buildings committee advertised through an RFQ process to obtain qualifications from firms interested in engineering the project. The municipal buildings committee then selected two highly qualified firms to meet with them to discuss the project in depth. The city council municipal buildings committee is recommending that the Caribou City Council award the project to Harriman at a cost of one hundred and fifty thousand for phases to and from, to and from investigations and design to construction administration. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion to award Caribou Fire Department renovation and upgrades project to Harriman at a cost of one hundred and fifty thousand.
I'll second that.
Go in second discussion. Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Perfect. Okay, item number nine on the agenda is public hearings, and we do not have any public hearings scheduled for this evening, so we'll move on to item number ten, which is reports by staff and committees. And our first report is the May financial report. Carl, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Mayor, counselors, manager Thompson. The narrative is on page seven of your packets. I'll be reading from page eight. May assets on hand at May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five is ten million, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-one cents. Cash on hand, four million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and five cents. Twenty twenty-five tax receivables, about three quarters of the way down the page, we collected fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-two cents in May. For our grand total of prepayments for the twenty twenty-five commandment is at two hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-two cents. On the next page, at the bottom of page nine, we have the liabilities as of May thirty-first. There were seven million, two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and three, uh, two cents. Moving over to page thirteen is our fund balance, about a quarter way down the page. We ended at three million, six hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents. Moving over to page fifteen is our expenses for the month of May. For the current month, we had expenses totaling eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, fifty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody for their years of service. It's really wonderful. Okay, item number 8B is the fire station engineering firm bids, so I'll talk a little bit about that. The City of Caribou has received funding through the Arustic County ARPA grant funding, through a congressionally-directed spending request from Senator Collins' office, and from funding that was set aside by designated capital funds for a project to make needed renovations and upgrades to the Caribou Fire and Ambulance Department building. The City Council Municipal Buildings Committee advertised through an RFQ process to obtain qualifications from firms interested in engineering the project. The Municipal Buildings Committee then selected two highly qualified firms to meet with them to discuss the project in depth. The City Council Municipal Buildings Committee is recommending that the Caribou City Council award the project to Harriman at a cost of $150,000 for phases to and from investigations and design to construction administration. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion to award Caribou Fire Department renovation and upgrades project to Harriman at a cost of $150,000.
I'll second that.
Vote in second discussion.
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Perfect. Okay, item number nine on the agenda is public hearings, and we do not have any public hearings scheduled for this evening, so we'll move on to item number 10, which is reports by staff and committees. And our first report is the May financial report. Carl, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, manager Thompson. The narrative is on page seven of your packet, so I'll be reading from page eight. May assets on hand at May 31st, 2025 is $10,847,632.91. Cash on hand, $4,632,292.05. 2025 tax receivables, about three-quarters of the way down the page, we collected $52,765.22 in May. For our grand total of prepayments for the 2025 commitment is at $255,692.82. On the next page, at the bottom of page nine, we have the liabilities as of May 31st, there Moving over to page 13 is our fund balance, about a quarter way down the page. We ended at $3,607,162.89. Moving over to page 15 is our expenses for the month of May. For the current month, we have expenses totaling $876,058.99. We're currently at 32% of our budget, and that's roughly 10% under budget. Again, most of our expenses that are under budget is our capital line item, which we don't expense until after commitment, so that really plays with the number as we get further and further into the year. Moving on to revenues, on page 20, for the current month, our revenues, we brought in $744,086.20, and we're about at 25% of our overall budget, that's down about 17%. And again, these numbers get really screwy until we get to commitment, because commitment is when we have our biggest revenue sources, which is our tax income, our tax revenue. Exize came in at $173,062.77 for May. Year to date, we're at $697,702.05, and we are currently only under budget 0.8 of 1%. Revenue sharing came in at $328,896.97. Year to date, we're at $1,072,46.63, and we are over budget through the first five months by 1.4%, or about $31,500 over the budget. Moving over to page 25 is our graph for the month. And again, you can see that we're really right in line. We are $118,000 under planned revenue, but then again, you see the big jump when commitment hits, so we will get there.
Does anybody have questions for Carl?
No. A motion to accept the financials, may financials was presented.
Have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Bagley? Kelly?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Carl. The next item on our agenda is an update on a visit that manager Thompson and I made to Cary Medical Center to see their newly renovated OB unit, so I just wanted to kind of share a little bit on that. And I don't know if we can pull those slides up, Penny or not, there's actually only one that, or a couple that I would show. The other one, I don't think will come in very clearly.
I tried to pull up the packet and didn't have any luck.
It's okay. So, I can just talk about it. So, we were invited up to the hospital, they have renovated their entire OB unit, it's beautiful, they've done a very, very nice job. You know, we have had a lot of OB units in the state and in Northern Maine closing, closing their doors, so our staff has picked up some patients due to that fact, but also just want people to know that they're here and that they plan to keep their doors open, and they've made a lot of modifications to that unit, and it just, it looks phenomenal. They are seeing a pretty big increase in the amount of births that are happening at the hospital over the past couple of years, and they anticipate that that will continue. Was very, very impressed, not only with the facility, the facility, but the staff. The staff up there is just incredible, and you know, it's very clear that they are compassionate, and they really care deeply about their patients, so it was just a really wonderful visit. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, I would urge you at some point, if you can make it up there to see, to go check it out. Okay, item number 10C is our city manager's report.
So, on our riverfront power plants, the emergency circular action, we are just waiting for the final fact sheet to be released by the EPA, and the city did receive a 2025 Brownfields cleanup grant for the steam plant in the amount of $4 million. The circular action, the EPA spent about $2.5 million, the last I heard, so. It's a very costly undertaking to clean up these power plants that were acquired through the automatic lien foreclosure process, but we're getting it done. As our finance director says, it will happen, it's just taking time, but we have, we have staff working on it, and it's gonna happen. So, events in marketing, dates for Thursdays on Sweden Street, June 26th, July 10th and 24th, and August 7th, and the first one was a huge success. The development committee meets on June 18th. The riverfront master plan final notice has been given by MBRC, so we'll be going out for an RFP soon on the riverfront master plan. The Caribou Economic Growth Council met on June 12th. Business outreach, staff met with Mayne and Company when in Portland. City Council has formed an ad hoc committee to come up with a plan for tax-acquired property. The fire station renovations, the council just approved the recommendation of the committee for the award of the bid on tonight's agenda. For the police station, the bids were extended to June 18th. The airport, the Apron project will begin on June 23rd. The comp plan update sections are complete, so staff is now in the phase of reading and editing. Four personnel changes, welcome to Eric Sanderson, the City of Caribou Economic and Community Development Specialist, and Eric is here. At every meeting he goes to, that committee thinks he was hired to work for them, so they, he comes back from every meeting with a long list of things to do.
Oh, Eric. Well, welcome aboard.
So, we've been trying to set up meetings, and Eric was with me in Portland when we met with Mayne and Company, and just trying to connect him with different people, and this week it will be the development committee that Eric will be going to, and they will, I'm sure, give him lots of homework, because that's been the trend so far, so.
And he was doing a great job of manning the booth at Thursdays on Sweden last week, too. All right. Does anybody have questions for Penny?
No.
Okay, item number 11 is unfinished business, and 11A is a cannabis medical caregiver discussion, that's on page 33 of your packet. So, I can go ahead and give a little background here. At the last two city council meetings, members of the Caribou City Council heard from citizens about changes in the medical cannabis laws that are having a negative effect on the business operations of registered caregivers operating under the state statute. There would be a lot that would need to be done to allow a caregiver retail store or registered dispensary to legally operate in Caribou. Counselor Kelly has prepared an ordinance to be introduced on the following pages. We have actually a packet here. This would be ordinance three of the 2025 series, Medical Cannabis Dispensary Ordinance. This has not been reviewed by municipal attorney Rick Solomon yet. If the members of the Caribou City Council would like an opinion from MMA Legal Services, we would need an approved motion as well. So, I would just like to open this up to a discussion by the council.
You want to start it, Jennifer, or, no? Do you have anything you want to write? I've just, I've been working with Jennifer on this closely, and I know she's done a lot of time on the, you know, in the backstory on this, and getting this ordinance legal. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to this, you know, planning board, MMA, legal, so I just, my feeling is that we need to do what we have to do to keep these businesses, or this business operational. So, with that, with that said, I will introduce ordinance number three, 2025, Medical Cannabis Dispensary Ordinance. And then, at some point, we'll have to schedule a public hearing.
Can you have an updated copy at your, at your place?
That ordinance has been introduced, and I don't know if that requires a further motion for, I'll introduce that. Do we need a motion for an opinion from legal services? Is that what the recommendation is, or if we just send it over to them before the public hearing?
Can we set for the public hearing and send it to legal within that two weeks' period?
And I do think we have time, we need two weeks, correct, to be able to?
Yes.
So, we do have time to put it on the next agenda.
No, you have to have seven days, so we wouldn't have time to put it in the paper for this Wednesday, which would make it the seven days. So, we can't have the public hearing on the 30th. The public hearing would have to be at the July 28th meeting. That's right, correct, it has to have seven days.
We just kind of, okay, the calendar there? So, we can set it for July 28th?
Yep.
That July meeting?
Yeah, we do, yeah.
So, let's set up.
Before we get too much further down the road on this, I'd like to point out that the first step for this should be to also the planning board to pick it up, and our ordinance actually lays out for any, they have chapter 13, section 13103, the ordinance says amendments, we will, it's been issued by the planning board, time is already voted by the planning board. City Council, or the planning board, or individual for requesting.
I hear, I hear, can read that.
The next section on the features says, any proposal for amendment shall be made to the planning board by the activity of the change of the law. When a change in zoning boundary, proposed, the application of that location of boundary change, shall accompany by a deal drawn for the new areas to change the intention, when an amendment proposed by other members of the council, the CEO of the local council. These states of schedule shall accompany the proposal to the public hearing, and then it goes on to talk about the law for adoption of amendment, and the first part of the law is within 30 days of receiving amendment, plus the planning board shall hold the first public hearing. The planning board will submit its thing, and then hand its recommendation over to the city council, who will then hold their own public hearing, and then propose an amendment, and then it's voted on. So, I think this initiative is great, I've supported all the way. The ordinance needs to be updated, but it's very clear by our own ordinance that this has to start with the planning board.
Did you have something you wanted to say, Counselor Kelly?
Dan, actually, in section 212, ordinance in general, it states that any counselor, an ordinance may be introduced by any member at any regular or special meeting of the council provided. It is in writing in a form required for final adoption, and contains only one subject, which is clearly expressed in the title, and upon introduction of the ordinance, the city clerk shall distribute a copy to each council member and to the city manager.
And I do believe historically, oh, sorry, I do believe historically, we have had other instances where we have introduced ordinances and worked through the council, and I, Counselor Smith, I don't know if you recall any of those?
Yes, we've worked through some situations, and I don't want to use a specific one, but we have, and I'm not saying that we omit the planning board from this, but if we're gonna have this on June 30th, and I think that gets the planning board, July, July, July 30th, that gets the planning board, has their one meeting a month, they should be, and if...
They can put their input.
They can put their input in at the, at the public hearing, as far as that goes. I'm not trying to circumvent the process, but we, time is of the essence on this, I think, and this is one of the things that the council could do, and not inhibit a business if we're talking about economic development, and this sort of takes down the road, if we push, if we push things out, and I'm not saying that we're trying to do anything illegal here, but all of a sudden it comes, and then it's August, and then it's September, and then it's, then it's November, and then we're back to where we're at.
And businesses aren't, are not able to operate.
And this, even if we do introduce, this ordinance has been introduced, I mean, we can send this to MMA, send it to our legal, that doesn't mean at the end that we vote on that complete ordinance, you know, there can be adjustments made, and I would hope that the, the planning board would weigh in on this, and then, and, you know, and give some of their thoughts, because this is gonna require some Smithsonian requirements, and there's been some questions about, I'm not real 100% familiar about that, but that's another, other topic, so that's something that'll have to be addressed between now and the public hearing, and after the public hearing does not necessarily mean we have to vote on it, or we choose that option. I just don't want to see this get pushed out too far. I mean, you know, the stale speed of government, that line, I don't like that, I mean, we should, we should be acting on this, and do what we can in our powers to, however that ordinance has changed, and that's my reason for introducing the ordinance tonight, is just to introduce it and get this going down the, get this going down the road, so that's my opinion on it, and I don't know if anyone else is, I've said enough on this topic, I guess.
Anybody else have any further discussion?
I'll just add, and I think we're okay with introducing the ordinance, what I'm saying is that our next step should be a request of the planning board to take this up, and the process you just described is not compliant with the current ordinance, so do that at your own terms.
Further discussion?
No.
Bagley?
We don't, this isn't, I just...
Oh, sorry, you just introduced, sorry. I'm sorry, yes, so we will plan our public hearing.
We don't need a vote.
And we set the public hearing?
Okay.
For July 30th?
July 20th.
July 20th.
Or July 28th.
It's July 20th. It's not just me making mistakes.
No.
And meanwhile, this, this will go, this will get sent over to our MMA, do we need a motion to send this to MMA?
Yes, you will.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we send this to, this ordinance to, well, our municipal attorney, Rick Solomon, and MMA Legal Services for review prior to the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Vote in second, further discussion? Now we get to vote? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Hopefully, we can have that information back before the, that gives us a month.
Yes.
Six weeks, so that's plenty of time.
So, hopefully, we'll hear something back, and planning board's welcome to voice their opinion as well.
And make sure it's the planning board on their agenda for the next meeting.
I made a note about that, too.
Okay, so they can, they know where we're, how we're doing this.
Perfect. Okay. Item 11B is a discussion of the 2025 municipal budget, and that's on page 37 of your packet. At the March 10, 2025 meeting, the public hearing on the 2025 municipal budget was held. There is a projected $1.2 million shortfall between expenses and revenues. The city council has directed staff to present a 10% savings, which would be approximately $1 million in savings, to lessen the impact on taxpayers. At the March 17, 2025 city council meeting, cuts to the budget were brought forward. These potential savings were less than $1 million, and were not accepted. Not sure if that's exactly the wording, we just didn't vote to, to do that. At the May 27, 2025 city council meeting, the subject of cuts was brought up again, and several approaches were discussed, including looking at additional cuts or funding, or funding the unionized departments at 2024 levels, and cutting other departments by 10%. Much of the savings presented come from open positions and deferring capital products, projects. It is the city council who sets the policy. Is the city council looking to cut programs, services, and staff? If so, please provide that direction. This is manager Thompson speaking. And we have some potential cuts, potential cuts information in our packet, so I would open the floor up to have a discussion on this.
We, I'd like to talk a little bit about this, I don't really want to get into school, but we talked about, we set our expense budget, and our charter states that we can reduce our expense budget any time, we cannot increase it, and I think there was an email that went out earlier, that we always end up at this position at the end, we're always like, no, we're gonna cut more, cut more, because it's easier, easier to do. We asked, the council asked, or through the manager, for 10% cut, department heads. Is that achievable? Yes. Is it realistic? No. It can be, so they came back with a, the department heads from manager came back with $759,000, we're getting a $1 million shortfall to start, to keep the city side mill rate the same. And so, they came back with $759,096 that the department heads and manager brought to us. So, with that, I think we can achieve on this, on the, from the city side of this, to keep our mill rate the same, regardless of the other two entities, because I don't want to get into that.
No.
That's another whole, another whole topic we're gonna deal with later, we're just dealing with this part of the entity tonight, in my opinion. So, those were brought to us, we didn't initiate those, so you can go through these next few pages, which I briefed through, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna look at all these, because in years past, and I think one of the councilors can agree with me, we used to go through these line by line, so we did direction to our, to our manager, this is what we want for the cuts, they came back, so we're not nitpicking on these individual cuts. You know, I may say, well, we went through this conversation, where I may say, well, this line item 31, I don't like that, the decrease here, that's what the department has brought back to us for that, so without any others, I'm gonna make a motion. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the 2025 expense budget by $759,096 pursuant to the recommendations given to us by the city council, or by city manager.
What was the amount again?
I think that's what the number was in the email.
Just because I'm not calculator strong here in my head, where does that put us for the mill rate? Does that keep us steady, or we're raising?
It's gonna, we're getting, we're getting closer to the million, I'm gonna continue here, so.
Okay, all right, well, at this point, since, I would like to interject two things. One, at the last meeting, and there was a lot of things that was discussed, and there was a lot of confusion going on, but when I clarified with Joan this evening before we started this meeting, we had made it fairly obvious, I think, during that last meeting, that no personnel were unessential that works for this community, and that no matter what we did, we were not going to touch the salaries or jobs. and that no matter what we did, we were not going to touch the salaries or jobs. And any rumor or innuendo that came from that to affect the morale of the city employees, please understand that that was never our concept from the get-go. The other part of that is the fact that by, and I too don't want to discuss the other entities that are the elephants in the room. But in order to maintain a almost zero tax rate, I agree with the next steps you're going to discuss. And I think regardless of how we feel, by sharing that burden equally as opposed to pointing out, you get this and you get that and you get this, then it's a shared weight that we all pull together, which in turn will make it easier for us to bear. I just want that out there for that.
And I think this proposal does not, and as mentioned earlier, the, we don't, we're not going to lay anybody off here. There's some vacant positions we may not fill, but it's easier not to fill a position like that. It is, it's hire somebody and tell them to go home in six months. I mean, I have lived in this town, too. It's not a, and maybe that can, and also in this, we've absorbed, we, there was some pretty good pay increases last year for some departments, well deserved. So this, if we, we're absorbing that as well, in this, in this budget as well. So I think that's, I think maybe the point there that.
Would it be helpful for you to disclose? I know you have other parts to your motion that you.
Well, no, I'm going to do them separate.
Okay.
I want to do this one first.
That's fine.
I have two others I'd like to.
Just so that everyone understands the full picture of what you're.
Okay. This is these, the $759 that I'm proposing was brought to us, to the council. And that includes a.
Can I, can I ask your question? I, I do not understand what the $759 coming from the package shows a figure of 733,698.
Was that, was that?
On page 47. 47.
And I'd, I'd also like to point out, I did find an error in this, uh, $10,000. I don't know how, how it came about, but on the police line.
On the what line? We can't hear you, Councilor Bagley.
Sorry about that. Is that better if I speak up a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, I'll try to keep it up. So on the police line, expense cuts, if you look through the narrative, they add up to 35 to 50, not 45. And so the total cuts would be 109,798, not 119,798.
Oh, he's talking about right here. These right here, right here, cross with people that understand what you're trying to. It comes to 109, there's a $10,000 difference.
Okay, got you.
Not yet.
It's not 119, it's 109.
Right.
Is that better?
What's that?
I didn't add it up.
Yeah. We might have to amend the numbers a little bit, but not by much.
Wow, I got it. Yes. Okay, so I guess, I didn't have a second on that. I guess I'll go further on this to get to us to the, my three motions here I was going to make and probably going to put these all into one to get us so people understand where we're at. There was a clarify, we had 100, there was 173,000 revenue found and then 586,096 dollars in cuts were proposed to us. Uh, we also have line item 45600, it's property tax relief fund. That's 194,797. Um, if you put those numbers together, the $759, that 194 gets us down to about 47,000 short of coming up, coming up to a flat mill on our side. And talking about that, so I was looking through line 373, that's a tax acquired property fund. There's 12,03920 in that, eliminate that. 490, um, that is approximately 31,000 or 32,000 in that. Take 14,000 out of there, it leaves us 17,000 in there. We have the trailer park reserve fund has 44,000 in it. There's been some question if I, I considered, or might have made a recommendation to eliminate that account. But apparently, there's, there's still some ties to the airport and that. But if we take 20,000 of that, at least $24,000 in that account does not strip that out. So I'm going to amend my motion that we reduce the 2025 expense budget by 759,96 by the recommendations of the city manager.
Or.
Or that, oh, excuse me, that number. Yes, correct. 730, 733?
Yep.
Okay, yep. 733,69759. Reduce the expense budget.
It should be 7, it should be 723.
Is that what it should be?
Yes, because you can take.
Well, if he takes the 10 off from the police.
You take the 10.
Okay, so what?
So 723, 723,697.59.
Okay, so that's going to, okay. So I'll just, I'll do this all at once, I guess, instead of three. Reduce the expense budget by 723,697 for the recommendation of our city manager and the department heads. Further reduce the expense budget by 194,790.77 cents from line 456-00, property tax relief fund. Continue to reduce the budget by an additional 46,039.20. Those monies coming from line item 373-07, an amount of 12,039.20. $14,000 from line item 490-00. $20,000 from 406-00. That's the motion. And if that's any more complicated than that, I don't know.
I'm not repeating that, but I will second it.
You will? Okay, well, I'm just trying.
I'm with you, you know, I've seen all numbers. I second that motion. God forbid Danielle trying to write it all down, but I.
Well, I got some, I got some, I had a cheat sheet here and some of this. So I think that'll get us pretty close to where we need to.
I think so, too.
I mean, within.
I, yeah.
I mean, we're going to be within a few, a few dollars one way or the other.
Was included in there, the ARPA funds?
No, I did not include the ARPA funds.
I mean, you could always make another motion.
Okay, I can, I can, let's, yeah, we can do that after.
I, I don't have the.
That was 67,000.
Yeah, I can get you the number.
Because it's going, because my number was a little different because I was based it on 759.
It'll help offset that basically, so it should still come out fairly flat.
Yeah.
Do you have the ARPA?
I agree.
We could make, do this one and then you can make that separate.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's do this one. We can second with your discussion.
Since we already have it all, right, okay.
To not, to make it even.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
No.
Bagley?
So I'm sorry, I was on you. If you, if you don't mind, I did have one point that I wanted to make and that is the phrase reductions to the expense budget was used several times in the motion and is actually the total of both the expense and the capital budget. Uh, the cuts are coming from both expense accounts and capital accounts. And I have to say, I'm a little bit bothered by the enormous cuts that are proposed for the capital of about $370,000. Do you recall that the capital budget committee already took pretty, pretty major cuts to the, you know, the cost of capital budget? And I just, I do not want to see that trend continue of continuing to defer our required capital expenditures in our municipal. So that 723,699 is made up of 354,000 of spending, I think, of 370 of capital. And we're doing it again for senior capital out, and that kind of really bothers me.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
No, I'd like to get this passed.
Okay. Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So where we're at, and my numbers are incorrect here, I guess, because I was using the 759. The actual number was 713 here. We're correct?
723.
723. So I think we just need to come up with what the actual number is.
And whatever, you know, what was the ARPA money that was left? 67,000?
It's a 67,48864, which the council has already voted to designate towards the increases in the police department. So this is just moving money from that, the ARPA funds, which was already, the, the council already voted to do that. This would just, I guess officially move it from there into a salary line.
We got 60 and that's 67.
I don't know what, if our finance director has any.
It's over 60, I'm, I'm getting.
Advice on making the motion or, or whatever. But it was, it was something that was already voted on. It's just, it was, we didn't move it prior to the budget. In the budget, we had, we had budgeted in the expense budget for the full amount of salaries when we had already appropriated this money from the ARPA funds, which we were allowed to do because they're public service.
Make a motion that we move the ARPA funds in the amount of. In the amount of 67,488.67. 64, 64, we've got to keep it tight. To the expense, to offset the expense budget. Is that?
Specifically to police wages, which is what the council voted last fall.
Okay, specific, to move, motion to move 67,488.64 from ARPA funds money in the expense budget for police wages.
Right, and then we'll save that amount off of the expense budget.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
There you go.
Nice work on that. Very nice work on that.
Can I, can I ask that we one more time review the numbers that was involved with? Just one more time, I want to make sure that we have them.
Sure. It's.
What's that? He wants Penny.
He just wants to hear numbers. How, would you be comfortable with Penny sending us an official number once she has time to, to double check?
Well, this is what we discussed tonight. I've got 623,699, 698, 173, 194,790. And then a combination of several line items that are 46, even? Is that right?
No.
46,3920, I believe.
Yeah, 46,039.
Thank you. And then the last one will be 67,480.
Yes, and 64 cents.
I'll take the verification by Penny. Okay, guys, thank you very much. It's hard not being there, trying to follow the competition. But thank you.
You're welcome.
So we've, reason for bringing this up tonight is that we typically do this the evening. We set the mill rate, so we, we've got our side set.
Yeah.
We've, we've made our line in the sand. It's just so close on the municipal side and whatever comes at us, we will have to adjust accordingly. Well, we're not adjusting on our side.
No, we're done.
We're done.
And now, now it's up to the, now we can start talking about the big elephant. The reality of this is that the Caribou voters and, I'll just save it. Let's move down to that and then, that way we're not killing time in the wrong spot. So let's move on.
Okay, so we're moving on to item number 12, which is new business. So 12A is the June 10, 2025 RSU 39 budget validation election results. That's on page 48 of your packet. So just to give a little bit of a summary, we did have a total of 589 Caribou voters that came out for that election. And the vote in favor of this school budget was 146 votes. The vote against this proposed school budget was 443 votes. And then the second article, which had to do with holding the meeting that's in March, I believe, correct?
No, it's to continue having the election every three years.
Oh, the actual June election, sorry. And on that one, the voters voted 421 yes and 167 no. So that will continue. So based on this, due to the results of this election, we will have to conduct another election. And I don't know, Danielle, if you want to talk a little bit about that, but basically there is a schedule laid out in our packets.
Can I ask just one question?
Yes.
Does this go on forever or is there a limit? It goes on forever?
Until it passes.
Until it passes?
Yep.
Because I know one year, Matamaska, I think went four or five times.
Yeah, Holton's gone three times, Lewiston's gone three.
So we may not even set a mill rate this year.
Well, it has to be set before this, or this has to pass before school goes back in, so.
And if it doesn't?
I don't know.
Do, would you use, go back to just using last year's until?
It's a good school board question.
Yeah, okay, I was just, I heard, because I heard someplace and it was on, I don't remember where they said after the second time, you know, they only go twice. But I don't remember where it was or anything else, so.
That happened one year in Prescott, they, they got to the point that they couldn't set the mill rate.
Yeah.
And then the commitment and they were running low on, because they couldn't send the bills out and it finally passed and then they were able to get that revenue. Unfortunately, I think we're, I hope it doesn't go that much further, but we're financially set enough to operate.
We may have to send the bills separately or something. Okay, I just.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to discuss on this topic?
Just, I'm very pleased that the Caribou citizens showed up and voted and grabbed the bull by the horns and is going to try to make themselves known. I think it's about time. You know, and I think we've done a very good job of where we stand, trying to take care of the citizens in our community and in the end, that's our goal. And thank you to the department heads who took the hit and cuffed up the cash and struggled. Appreciate it. Wish it was better news, but this is not all that bad. I really hate when you do the math of it. It seems like every time the mill rate goes up by two points, we get to tell someone they can't keep their home. And that's not a job I want to have. So I hope that the school board takes what happened to them to heart and tries to come up, and nothing against the teachers, please, God, nothing against teachers. They're great people. But their union, I wish them the very best in getting their head out of the sand and moving in a better direction.
Any further comments?
I'd like to add to that if I could. Uh, I would like to just add my feeling. I just think it's, it's great that the council decided to act on this. And I think it's a long time coming and it shows that we're being responsive to our voters and our citizens. And I think that was wonderful. I couldn't be happier with the results tonight. So thank you, all of you, for your courage to make the decisions that you have to tonight. Thanks.
Okay. So as part of this, we have to have this other election and that would be held on July 8. So we do have to approve a couple of things. We have to approve the start time for that election. We also have to appoint our election warden. So what are the wishes of the council?
Move, set the start time at 8:00 AM, appoint Danielle Berset as election warden and Christina Drinkle, Amber Mendoza, deputy warden for the July 8, 2025 RSU 39 budget validation election.
I second that.
Have a motion and a second, further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. And maybe, I don't know, would it be possible to just put something on our website that kind of outlines these dates? Oh, okay, perfect. Good, good. Good, good. Wow, you're just one step ahead of me here. Okay. All right. Item 12B is a request to sign a corrective deed. That's on page 50 of your packet.
I'll make a motion to sign the provided corrective deed for the property located on map 16, 151.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
She... Oh, you've got one of those. So she has one.
Okay. Item number 13 is reports and discussion by mayor and council members. I never get to go first, so I'm going to today. Because I want to say it first. I was really impressed with Thursday's on Suede and the kickoff last week. I thought it was fabulous. So many vendors showed up, and it looked like everyone was having a really great time. Music was great, so really would like to commend Gary and the other city staff that were there, working really hard to make that happen. Sure.
Yeah, yeah, I was down there, actually. I was down there helping serve some french fries and stuff with the lodge, and we sold out.
Nice.
An hour and a half into it, something like that, so... It was all kinds of different foods, and I don't know if anyone else's. It was just crazy. It was just a lot of different vendors, a lot of...
It went down to the cheesy truck. That was good.
You did? You wanted grilled cheese?
I had the Philly cheesesteak. So, oh my God, it was so good.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it was.
I guess I... Yeah, I said it off the horn earlier, so I'm gonna punch it, so...
Councilor Terryo, did you have anything else you wanted to share?
No. Just like to have that, that's all.
Councilor Kelly?
I just want to thank everybody for their support with the ordinance. I know it's a touchy subject, but I thank the council for their support.
Councilor Watson?
I got to hang out with the library committee. That was their last meeting this month, you know, until this fall. And I must say, it's an incredible group of people, and I'm very pleased to be there with them.
That's great. It's commendable for Peter. Dan, did you have anything you'd like to share?
Nothing further for me. Thank you, though.
Okay.
I'll just one more question.
No. No more. No more. Okay. Our next regular meeting will be June 30, 2025. We do have an executive session on the schedule for this evening. What are the wishes of the council?
You read it, I'll second it.
Executive session. Motion of executive session personnel pursuant to one MRSA 4056A, non-union employee survey results.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terryo?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Probably call in. So I would like to thank everybody for attending the meeting tonight.